I think he said the recording had started. Period. I still can't hear anything.
Muted.
We were muted.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Agenda confirmation. Do we have any changes or adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, it's been recommended under the highway, the capital purchase request for the tandem truck be removed and be brought back at a later date.
Okay.
The highway capital purchase request.
Is there any other adjustments to the agenda?
Not from me.
Okay, yeah.
I would just like, sorry, I would like on consent agenda just to discuss the.
Safe Generations training.
The one that cost.
Fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to speak about it now?
You want to talk, you want to do it now? We can, because we talked about it yesterday.
I have it up here. Oops. It doesn't matter.
I can give you a little synopsis and then if we want more information then we can maybe have Denise come. But the, one of the things is the Safer Generations for Training has been identified as a best practice for safety planning. And one of the things with Minnesota African American and Family Preservation and Child Welfare Disproportionality Act.
Is that, is this the Western Prairie Human Services?
Yep.
Well, so the problem I have with this is, is it just an, I just saw an invoice here.
So they are, they, the region has decided to go together to provide this training for all their child welfare worker, or not all, this is for thirteen of our child welfare workers. So it's a regional hub. It's a, it's not just a one and done training. It's a long training to get them certified in Safer Generations.
Well, here's my problem. If this is going to be on the consent agenda, we need dialogue and we need to know just, instead of just a bill. I mean, this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I can't consent agenda. I don't know what it is, so.
And I had the same question yesterday. Tell them how it's funded.
Oh, it's been funded through the opioid funding, the grant funding.
Through our own grant, or through the, through, we're granting ourselves.
Through the Child Protection Opioid Grant, yep. Not through, not through the opioid advisory.
But you understand, you can't put something on consent agenda and just put a bill up there.
Bill, you gotta have some explanation.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, because I have no idea what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
But I do not need it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could just, this is Denise. I'm attending remotely. There should actually be an invoice and a purchase order both. If they both got included in the packet. The purchase order includes information about the grant that is being paid by the grant and what the, what it's for.
Is that?
For how many, for how many employees, that it's for, training them for the act. Much more detail on the purchase order if you saw that.
Yeah, we didn't get that.
We, we only have the bill, Denise.
Yep.
Okay, that was an error on, on our part here, apparently. They should, but they both should have been included, which would have included all of that information. So I apologize.
Thanks, Denise. Do we have any, anything else?
I do not need that poll though.
Okay, perfect. So do we have any more? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So a motion by Erica. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Richard. All right, we have Commissioner Hanson online, so we will do a roll call vote. So let's start with Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
You pointed it.
I know, I know. I'll point that way next day.
Aye.
I'm aye. All right, motion carries.
I was waiting for you to say aye.
Well, he said Hanson, so I'm like.
Well, Hanson and Nelson, they kind of sound.
Yeah, they do sound.
And we look alike, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Satisfied.
Yeah, you don't look like an NFL, former NFL player.
What?
All right, now we'll move on to our minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, or substitutions to the minutes from last meeting?
I had one on page, and it's just a clarification. Under the Fox Lake Association, it says in Lake Erie Township.
It should be Lakeview Township.
I thought it was Lakeview Township.
It is. I had that one too.
That was all I had.
Anybody else have?
On that same, same one, I don't know if it should say petition for local. I, I think there was no petition that we received, so maybe just saying, asked how the process, I mean, I don't know, but there was no.
It was more of a discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it was just a, but they didn't present a petition, so I don't think the word petition should be in there. It was just a discussion on what they needed, how they needed to do it. That was all.
Then, of course, on page three, one of three, under Commissioner Nelson's reports, there should be a comma after courthouse.
Oh, my dear.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's not courthouse, like the mental hub.
All right, does anybody else have anything else for, corrections for the minutes? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd with the corrections. Okay, motion by Erica. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry. Commissioner Hanson, well, are you, roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, aye. Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Aye. All right, all right. Motion carries. All right, open forum. Do we have anybody on the open forum?
Oh, thanks.
I can't read this. My glasses on, sorry. So Bonnie, Bonnie, right?
Yes.
Okay, Bonnie Graham, Guyer Graham. All right, please state, when you, before you start, please state your name and your address and then we'll, then go ahead.
Okay, my name is Bonnie Guyer Graham and I live at 308 Sunset Avenue in Detroit Lakes.
Yep.
I'm here as a representative of the League of Women Voters. You see the shirt, and you see. We came today to congratulate the commissioners and the county staff for running free and fair elections in 2024. And we want to thank you for that. I made phone calls last week to county staff to get their email addresses so I could send them the report, and they were very thankful to get a thank you. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. The League of Women Voters Minnesota produced a report of the post-election review from 2024. And as you know, the post-election review is held in every county. The, it involves election officials hand counting the paper ballots and comparing them to the machine totals. Through detailed reports from independent observers, like three members of the league attended the Becker County count. We wrote, they wrote a report to provide information to the whole state, letting them know about the process of the per and the results of what, what people found. In 2024, a hundred and sixty volunteers with the League of Women Voters observed post-election reviews in forty-three of the eighty-seven counties. And in short, we just wanted to let you know that observers reported that in each county conducted the meeting in a transparent manner and hand counts matched the machine tabulation with only a few discrepancies in a couple counties, not this county.
Bonnie, just to, Mr. Chair, just to expand on that, I mean, if you've been here on election night, the township officials and the county staff work so hard and, and one missed vote, one missed, one, one error, one missed ballot is a huge deal. I mean, so the integrity, I mean, I've always defended the integrity of Minnesota's vote. It, it is, I've, I've seen people scrambling and, and I've been here for, I mean, I come to the courthouse many times on, on evening and to watch the ballots come in and watch the screen. We come in here. It is, it's, I mean, you gotta be kind of weird to enjoy that, but I really, I really enjoy seeing the tabulations come in and it, they work so hard and it come, it come in so late. So I've had people question the, I said, the only thing I can tell you is Becker County, and I think Minnesota does it right, the, I said, the, the ballots are there, you, you can count them and we do, there are checks. So thank you for your, for that thoughtful thank you, and, and we pass that on to the township officials and township judges because they're, they're the ones that make this whole thing, you know, work so smooth. But I've, I've counted ballots and done the, the, it, it, we, it is a system. Now, I'm not saying every state is as good as we are because I think there's some systems that aren't as good, but Minnesota's is really good. And I applaud the state for, for having such a, a checks and balances in that system, so thank you.
That's right. I just wanted to concur with that. I'm an election judge here in Detroit Lakes and I have come to the courthouse with our ballots. And then been through the questioning process of where is all the paperwork and accounting for everything that happened at the election that whole day. It's, it's quite a process.
Yeah.
I wanted to let you know also that the League of Women Voters today is celebrating Voter Registration Day. It's National Voter Registration Day, so we'll be going to the high school and working with Lake Park also to do getting kids registered. Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are allowed to be pre-registered now, and eighteen-year-olds can register to vote. So I brought you all a copy of the post-election review report and a nice little card that you can use to check your registration. Or maybe take an election quiz and see what you know.
Ooh, I don't know. Well, thank you. My, my daughter turned, well, she got to vote, well, I think she voted for me, but she got to vote in the last election cycle, so it was.
Yeah.
I've been a commissioner her whole life.
Have you?
Oh, really? Wow.
Nice.
Her whole life.
Thank you.
All three of my girls' whole lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought this was a coupon or something.
Coupon.
Wow, it's a quiz.
It's an IQ test.
Voting pilot.
I thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Jim Bond.
I, I did it again. I didn't realize that was speakers. I thought it was attendance.
Oh, okay.
We'll mark you down as present.
Yep, we're present. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in the open forum? All right. Reports and correspondents, who would like to start?
I can start. We had our policy, the AMC Policy Committee last Thursday, Friday. I'm on the Public Health and Human Services Committee. We set our five top priorities. And really, they had to do with system modernization, continued advocating for mental health. Of course, we discussed the act, the Minnesota African American Family Preservation and Child Welfare Disproportionality Act. And really for the need to state, for the state to set those definitions of what, who is going to be included, decide who is going to complete the case audits. There was discussion that at one time the, the state wanted all cases to be audited, which would be not feasible, in my opinion. So really, they're, they're pushing for just a, you know, a statistically handful of cases to be, to be audited and, but also who is going to complete those audits. They really are advocating for the state to complete those audits, not for the agencies themselves to complete them. And then additional funding for staff, prevention services, and training such as cultural training and safety plan training. The state does not provide any safety plan training, so that's why you see, we spent some, you know, some money to go through that safety plan training because safety planning is a huge component of the act that you have to do safety planning before removal and you have to do it upon return. So I mean, it's, it's really an important skill for our child welfare workers to have. And, but there was also a lot of discussion at one of the keynote speakers about just system modernization in general. Minnesota's systems in human services are all extremely outdated. Our MAXA system is, I think, was created in nineteen eighty-nine. And then we have SSIS, which, you know, we do have funding to, to modernize, which is our newest system. But, but the most complicated system, and that one was rolled out in the late nineties. So it's, it really is a push, especially with the SNAP and Medicaid changes because there's a lot of manual work that needs to be done with SNAP eligibility. And with the changes to SNAP, error, if you're, if the state's error rate is too high, we lose funding from the federal government. And if we don't have a system that, if we're going to depend on it being done manually, we have a, a higher chance of meeting that error rate. So I think we really have to, as a state, look at our systems.
With MRC, that was one of the topics too, the, the, just the slow time that, I mean, so much time taken up by the computer. And Representative Torkelson said the wheel of death, I think was, it was quite funny.
Yeah, he said that, he said that in that panel too.
Yep, yep.
Wheel of death, yeah, yeah.
Then another committee I attended was the Opioid Advisory Committee. We meet quarterly. We heard reports from Public Health, Behavioral Health, and F5. They all three received funding with the last RFP. F5 is getting up and running. They have their person hired and they're hoping, hoping to hit the ground running. Behavioral Health has, I believe, provided funding. If you, if you recall, their, their grant was to help people. There's a thousand dollar down payment for those without any insurance to go through outpatient treatment facility here in town. And so the grant was to cover that thousand dollar payment so that people could, could enter treatment and complete it. And they have provided that to one person so far, and that person did successfully complete treatment. And then Public Health is really, they're, they were awarded money to do some Narcan education, which they did at the fair, they did out at the food shelf. And they've provided different trainings throughout the area. They also have brought Narcan out to the food shelf so that they can give it away with their food shares. So that, and RFP will likely go out again by the end of the year for the next round of grantees. We had our housing committee last week. The, the Housing Subcommittee is recommending that the RFP for the Maple Avenue project in Fraser that it doesn't go out until next spring. Cody is going to be looking for other funding opportunities since the other bids that came in were quite a bit higher than what we had thought that it would be. And while we have the funding for it, it would.
Deplete it.
Deplete it. So we're hoping that we can find some grants that we can get that. And then maybe with it going out in the spring, we could maybe get some local contractors, you know, the last, when the RFP went out, the only contractors that responded were from the metro area. So that could be why the, the cost was a little bit more.
I talked to some local contractors and they were a year out, a year. I mean, they haven't worked for up to a year.
So.
So I, so I was trying to get something done this fall, so I might be getting it done, but we'll see. It's tough to find.
Then the last committee that I had was the RAC Committee. And there's, we had a lot of discussion about kind of creating a, a brand for the county to include trails and QR codes. And Phil can maybe go in a little bit more up to, more detail about that. And we also got an update on the trail routing study, South on Fifty-Nine. And then MinDOT came with their report for the pedestrian cyclist counter. It was out from June eighteenth to July twenty-first out in Dunton Locks. And I'm only going to provide what the average daily count is, but. Sorry, northeast going into the trail, there was three hundred and seventy-three walkers and fifty cyclists. That's all I got.
Who'd like to go next?
Here's, here's those letters of support for, from Lake Eunice Township, Corman Township, and. Corman Watershed. I think I sent those to you, but those are the hard copies, if you wanted, the copies, just offering support for the Heartland or for the bike trails or to come down into the Corman, Corman area. So, you know, one thing that Phil and I, I think, and Carrie was at MRC, we had a really nice panel. Represented Jordan Rasmussen from Fergus Falls was there, Republican representative that is, that is just so well spoken and I'm just so impressed with them. I think it was, is it Senator Feis, Feis, a Democrat that, and, and Representative Paul Torkelson, Torkelson? Anyway, it, it's nice to see those three, it's nice to see people work together. And I, I think those, those are examples of, of our representatives that are working together. They, they, they had, they, they had questions prepared for them. And Representative Torkelson had a difficult time when talking about the, yeah. He was talking about a story about, but it was with Melissa Hortman, and he really, he struggled to get the story out because. But, I mean, we need leaders that will lead with compassion, not anger and fear and, and demonizing opposing views. And these three are those people. And I think we're fortunate in Minnesota have people like that. But they, they gave some stories of some accomplishments that they had, and, and there were some really, really interesting stories, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that was so nice to hear about them is because it was such a unique year at the state where they were forced to work together. So it was nice to hear the stories of them working together because too often in, whether it's our federal government or state government, we see too much fighting back and forth. So it was nice to.
Right, and nasty fighting. I mean.
Yes.
They, they stated, and you see some of their, some of their quirks in the trib that, you know, they, they use these phrases now and they say, well, this is how that started. It was just kind of a joke, I mean, it was humorous and, and they get tagged with that line and people don't understand. It was just them having, like us, like me and Richard, having banter next, you know, with each other. They don't know that, sometimes it gets nasty, but sometime, most of the time it's, it's, it's good. I mean, we're, we're, we can work together and, and be, and negotiate. Don't have to agree at the end of the day. But you have to be, in my opinion, you have to be respectful and move on from that issue to the next one and start anew, so. That was, that was a, it was nice to hear those, those stories from them, that, the success stories that they had. And some bipartisan stories from Senator, what's her name, Weiss? Feis, Feis, Feis. Anyway, Phil, you have anything to add to MRC? I think it went, went well.
I, third, I can go next. Yeah, MRC, I thought it was, I said it was my kind of first time, so I was just kind of taking it in, but I, I concur with what, what Barry said. As far as my other meetings, I invited Jim Joy out to tour our solid waste facility. Steve Skug and I took him around and showed our, our plans. If you remember, we approved some engineering to, to see if we can make the flow better out that are, at our solid waste site. We did that in the spring, so I just, as those plans are coming together, I just wanted to get him out there to see if he had any opinion on it because there's no way we can do it with our own money. We'll definitely need some state help. So we did that. And I've got Copec for October first. He's going to come in and take the same tour. I had a highway. We spent extensive time talking about the Lake Park City project to rectify that, how can we rectify that now and make sure it doesn't happen for future projects? So Barry, we took that to Subcommittee and your voice, I mean, you've been pretty strong on that and, and we, hopefully we can get that figured out for, for, for next time. The Reclamite, remember that new, the seal coating is the normal way to do roads. We were trying out this new material, Reclamite. And if you drive on Richwood Road or Westlake Drive, there's a couple other spots, but those are probably the most common ones that people drive on. If you look at that, that's the new material that went down, so that's called Reclamite.
I noticed right away, Phil, that I noticed right away the Reclamite, it, it was a wet, obviously, sur, surface area, but the, the. And I was waiting and I will have to go look again now to see if the, I mean, because the pro, one of the pros is that, is you don't have to repaint the lines. But the lines are very dull after that, so I don't know if they'll, if, when you get a rain, it'll, you know, brighten that up because I don't know that you'd want to not repaint your lines after, after that. But we'll, we'll have to see after some rain comes and some wear to get that, to clear up again.
Yeah, agreed. And if you saw it, I, I mean, maybe the sand wasn't all wiped off yet, but maybe it does dull it. I mean, it was, it was an experiment. We're just going to try it out. So it does really deepen the color of the road. That's the thing I noticed, and it does look wet. You gotta keep people off it. Whereas with Sealco, you put the little rocks on there, you can drive on it pretty much right away. But in addition, the county road striping is all finished. Some of those lighting intersections that we approved in the spring, lighting the rural intersections, that work is underway now and hopefully done before freeze up. We will be bidding the Westlake Drive Phase Three project in November, so that's upcoming. That'll be a big one. And then the October, Jim suggested, I guess in the past, we've went on an October road tour. So just be thinking of that and, and some potential dates. I think Jim will come back with what that looks like. Had the rack with Erica. A couple things to add. The Dunlock's parking, we put a little parking at Highway Fifty-Nine and Dunlock's Trail there. We're kind of waiting on the parking in the, in the park area there where the old shelter is. Steve Skug thinks we can get a, a shelter, some kind of a grant there to redo the old shelter and redo the parking at the same time. So we're kind of just holding off on that for now. We also put that Pelican River Watershed building, we're putting it out for biz to see if someone would pay us a little bit for it to get rid of that building. And then you talked about the Dunlock's, the Bucksmills Trail Study. I think we're going to talk about that a little later. I also have the watershed. They're, they're, you know, refocusing, clarifying, and implementing some of their new rules and, and some of these, these bigger projects. That work is all taking place now. Also, the MOU, I did talk to Kyle. I asked at the meeting if the, the MOU between the county, the city, and the watershed was complete. It is complete. I haven't seen it yet, but Kyle said he didn't have any issues with it. And Brian said, Brian had worked with their attorney to work out those details, so that should be forthcoming. And then, like you guys both mentioned, the AMC Policy Conference. My couple takeaways. The first day or the first full day, I sat in Environmental and Natural Resources. I got a chance to hear from the DNR, which was really interesting, and, and, and see who the leaders are there. That was, that was really nice. One item came up that I didn't really expect, and I want to recreate the flurry that happened in our meeting, but the shotgun zone elimination update was a big deal, which, which took all the oxygen in the room up. But I, I don't think we have that issue in our county. Barry, can you speak to that or?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't aware this was such a huge issue either because it doesn't affect Becker County. We're in a rifle area already. So the state gave, the state gave counties the authority to regulate whether they're a rifle or shotgun. Or if they can move to rifle area in their, in their district or in their county, so. For deer, for deer hunting.
Shotgun, Barry, you remember that? Our, our area was always shotgun.
Yeah, no, for us, it was, um, west of 59, I thi- or west of 32 was shotgun. Or north of 10 and west, I mean, there were some lines up there that were shotgun, but I've always been in rifles, so.
Don't mess with Minnesota deer hunting.
And the commissioners that have to make this decision now are saying, thanks for that one. Cause that's not a fun decision when you have room full of people that want to use a shotgun only or rifles in their, in a hunting area. It's pretty passionate, I guess, so.
Erica, I learned, Erica, what you said, don't mess with Minnesota deer hunting. That's what I learned in that meeting. I couldn't believe the, the pushback and, and taking of sides in that room immediately. So, um, I, but I, I am now aware, so.
You know, I, I think we've, we've seen a little bit of that here with, with the, with our forest, with our tax forfeit land, you know, with the, I mean, that is a, that's a huge tradition now. Hunting for a lot of camps in those woods, hunting and, um, very passionate, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that lease land.
Yeah, lease and put cabins and build cabins in the woods and, um, so, yeah, it's.
So that was my, my first day, um, and that was really interesting. The second day was transportation. That's the committee I'm supposed to sit on both days. But, uh, the items that came up were this, uh, this retail delivery fee, the Amazon, the packages that are being delivered to people. They want to put a little fee on that, um, to.
There already is a fee.
Oh, is there? Well, maybe they want to put some more on it then, uh, but it's a delivery fee. I, I guess, I, I was just trying to follow that a little bit.
I think there's a 50 cent fee on every, every package. Well, I get it. I get it put on my, I can see the bill. I can see that on my bill, there's a 50 cent package fee on mine.
Do you have the Amazon price?
Maybe that's just special just for you. I don't know. They talked about putting 50 cents more on it. They talked about putting a dime on all the packages. Anyway, I, that, that's what I learned from that, I guess.
Is I think it's a state tax, a 50 cent parcel tax.
Is it a new one?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure, I don't know, but I, I saw it on the bill, parcel tax.
You know, that might go to a different fund or maybe that's state money. Maybe this was for, uh, more local. I, I, I don't know. I, I didn't know to even ask that question, actually. The other thing was we did talk about a little wetlands credits and for improving roads and stuff. So that was interesting because I've been kind of into that lately. Going back to the, uh, natural resource, uh, the other thing that came up was, and this is the reason I wanted to sit in on that was I wanted to hear about their solid waste thing. I only spent like 15 minutes on solid waste. But the MPCA director, was it Tom Johnson, came in and gave a, 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 a talk. And he's a governmental relations guy and I just, I asked a simple question that kind of got some people upset. I, I said, does, in, in, does incineration eliminate PFOS? And, uh, he said, no, and then he kind of got pushed into saying, well, sometimes. And that was the final answer, but, uh, some people came up to me, asked the words and says, yes, it does. At 1900 degrees, it absolutely destroys that PFOS, which is worldwide now. It's a thing where I guess we're trying to get rid of, but incineration does get rid of that. But I think that is a murky political issue because I don't think there, if incinerators get rid of it, wouldn't we want more incinerators to get rid of this PFOS? If it's that bad, that, no one would say that. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And that, that's pretty.
Well, I suppose, I suppose he, he took it as, you know, nothing's a hundred percent, but I think it's, I think, you know, from what we've been told. It's like 99.9% you know, effective of getting rid of the, so that's, that's better than any other, um, form that there is, so.
What I took was that he did not want to be on public statements saying, yes, we need more incinerators. I was trying to match the two, I guess. I, unintentionally, I just wanted to know. But that's what I was.
Sure, you're one of those troublemakers that.
I am.
Room to, to set, set that poor guy up. Right, they have a, there's an incinerator on the cities that they have huge confer- or conflict with that, I don't know. People don't want it.
Was that one of them that presented?
Oh, he was the, the state. He was from the state.
Yeah, but one of the solid waste presented on Thursday. There was Polk County and there was.
Not Polk, obviously.
Scott Olmstead. There's three of them, but I can't remember now which, which, where they were from. But I thought there was one in the metro area. Anoka, maybe? I don't know.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Well, um, Richard and I had, um, NRM. And it, we had, uh, we reviewed or we talked about the trail routing study a little bit, the Osage Swim Beach update. Um, the, the DNR worked on fix, getting more of that rebar and concrete out of the swim area. Did everyone get the, did everyone get forwarded that email? From, are the, the notes from NRM? It has picture, it has the pictures on the swim beach too. So it, the, if you want to look at that, grab that email. We, where there was a, there was an easement that we were discussing and, and we kind of delayed that to look at the next, at our next meeting. Cause it's crossing tax forfeit land and we're wondering if there's other areas better, um, better to go through that area. You don't like giving easements through tax forfeit land. I remember we used to never even consider it, but. We are, um, making a payment to the, for the seedling, um, 25% payment. I think that was approved, so we didn't need bring before board. One of the discussions too, we, we discussed, um, the, the roads. And I think this was a item Phil wanted to be discussed at, at, at our meeting today. Can we, can we get, well, Jerry, Jerry might've had some interest in this too. He spoke on earlier. But what can we get funding for our, some of our trails in our tax, in our forest? And we, and we were told that we didn't get even to spend what we budgeted this year for, for maintenance and upgrade. So we're looking at, can we, can we identify at least some of the main roads, the, the high use roads? And maybe work with highway department and, and put them on a bid with, you know, maybe we can bid those for once or twice a year, you know, something. But can we, can we put those on a bid sheet so they, so we can get more affordable, um, upgrade? And then if we need to increase pay on that, can we use gravel tax money? Or can we use maybe some, um, sales tax money to offset some of those costs? So that was a, that was where our discussion was. And I think, I think we want to do that. I don't know. Is it the wishes of the board to, to examine that and, and see if we can't? If, there's got to be a list of trails that are the most used and those most used ones that we look at making improvements on. And, and maintaining at a higher level. And I think Jerry probably agrees that some of those, and I don't know how you identify them, but.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jerry. Yeah.
What you need to do, I'm, I'm Jerry Schram from Erie Township. And I, I spent some time up on the tax forfeited land. And we have the, as I've told you many times, we have the most horrid trails of the counties around here. And all you have to do, folks, take that pickup, take that car, take a little drive, cross that, that secret line, 113. Go over into Monoman County, drive up Hydeland Trail, drive up, uh, Strawberry Mountain Road Trail. Drive up, uh, Anchor Masson. Those trails are put into shape, first of all, and then they can maintain them. Don't just run a road grader over it and say, oh, boy, we spent $96,000 on this trail. No, you gotta get it in shape. Those roads are nice. I can drive my Challenger on them. And that car is so god darn low, I run over a popsicle stick, I tear off a muffler. But anyway, you gotta get the things in shape. I've been hearing, yeah, we're going to do that. We're going to do that. No, you aren't. You just don't do it. You should all go stand in the corner because our roads are not in shape.
Jerry, 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 did, when you were commissioner, did you do it?
Uh, I've, I've been up there all the time. It's automatic.
One of our problems is, we've been trying to do this, Jerry. We've lined up contractors, okay? And then they maybe came and did a little and then they left or they didn't show up at all. And so this is, if we have some money and we're actually trying to do it, so we really need to look at.
I think we need to identify priority roads and start at the top and then just work your way down. It's not a one-year fix. It's, it's a longer term fix.
We need a process to do it.
Everybody is in favor of doing it and we maybe got to just find some different contractor, somebody who's serious about doing.
Once they get built up though, I think if they're on a, if they're put in a package bid out, just like the, the gravel, the blading contracts. Then they have, then that contractor will maintain that. So I mean, there's, I think we have to change how we're doing it, is what I'm saying.
And we're, we're actually looking at, you know, getting some of our own equipment, okay? Because the, it, I would rather contract it out, but if, if people aren't serious about it, maybe we, maybe we do have to have somebody at least maintaining it. Once it's done.
You've got nothing to maintain. You've got, you've.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
But there's brush.
Then you can maintain it and you've got to clear the.
Right, that's what I do.
That, that, uh.
Canopy.
Brush, uh, doesn't, doesn't allow it to, to dry out in years. Well, like this year, our spring, our summer was quite wet. Next year, maybe it's dry as, as could be.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think we ask our staff to identify, um, X amount of miles, you know, this, for, for 26 to do this. I mean, and which trails and which, I mean, which, which is the most beneficial? And, and, and obviously we would have to go in there and, and build some of it. And, and maybe that's going to take a lot of money. So then we have to figure out, can we use, you know, gravel tax money? Now, that might not be available for that project, but, um, if we're going to build up a road, then we'll have to use maybe smart, smart tax money.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, uh, I've, I've tasked Mitch Lundin with coming up with a five-year plan to afford our trails, just like our roads. Like we do our, our, our county roads, our highway, they come up with a five-year plan. I've asked him to come up with that, for our trails, identify those, like you said, the, the highly used ones, not the auxiliary trails, just the main ones. And then the, the problem always is, and this I haven't figured out yet, is, is where's the funding source for that continually to keep that? But what, but I agree, we have to, we have to take care of our trails. The funding source has been the, the piece that I'm trying to put together. But the gravel tax, the smart tax, I think those are both o- on the table, a portion of them to, to help take care of these.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know if, I mean, I'd love to use gravel, the gravel tax for that. I don't know if that would qualify for, but in that area.
In the gravel tax, Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Nelson, in the gravel tax, I, I looked at the statute, it says special projects. So I don't know if this could be a special project. And it maybe could be a way, because part of this gravel money goes to the township. Maybe they have, have the same need. If, if the township would be on board, maybe we could really do something because there'd be more funding. If they would be interested in helping, uh, fix these roads. But right now, uh, Boyte is up there on Pike Lake Road and they did exactly what Jerry was talking about. They don't just go in there and grade, they built up the road, uh, and, and created some just quasi ditches so that the water gets off the road. That's, that's the biggest thing. You gotta get that water off the road, as I see it. And then drain it to a, or get it going in the right direction, anyway.
And you have any?
Anything else to add to?
Well, that building, um, if people are interested in that building, you can find it on our, on our website. Under news and announcements. Yeah, if somebody's interested in taking down that building. The only other thing, we did have the tribe here, they are saying that there's record wild rice harvest. So maybe wild rice would be a little cheaper.
With, with that, we also went over some parcels for the land sale, some old parcels that the, and the tribe was there reviewing those also. Tribal representation anyway, not the tribal council. But there was, there's a couple, there's one, I think, that, that borders that some trust land for the tribe that they, it's an adjoining property owner only. And those are sealed bids for those property owners adjoining that land. But, uh, the value that was on it was 22,000. It wasn't a very large parcel. So we reviewed some of those and there wasn't really, there was only one parcel that was open, pu- public bidding one, correct? So nothing significant on that list coming up. I think so.
Richard.
Now, Phil covered highway, except for that, we do have a dump truck for anybody looking for a dump truck. Today is the last day on Purple Wave Auction. So, you know, George, if you need a dump truck, it's dandy. It's orange with green box.
One thing that, uh, I think it was Dave or, or they, they were talking that with the tribe, tribe, they said they had a, I think most of us have heard that they had a, a calf buffalo up there that they weren't expecting. So it's kind of a, interesting and I, um, I thought they were, you know, when they talked about their bison herd, I was imagining something more significant. But, um, they don't have very many.
No.
In that herd, but they have two, two separate, one is for butchering and one is for breeding. So they do butcher that. And they also have a agreement with some, um, the Amish for growing foods. That they, they buy some of their foods wholesale and, and distribute those. So that was a pretty neat local farm to family foods project, I think, so.
Is that it? Let's see, I, I have a couple. So Phil and I had, did have a Heartland Trail meeting. We, we, we taught, the Houston Engineering came in, gave us a presentation, which are going to come in today, so we won't go into that. And then, uh, the other thing, big thing that we talked about was, uh, what we need to do with the remaining funding from the, from the, uh, 2023 bonding grant that we got for the trail. So we, we're going to come up with ideas, present them, uh, and then we're going to discuss it again at our next meeting, I believe that was the plan. But what's, there's some constraints on it and there's some confusion on what some of the constraints are. So we need to have Kent Starr, who's the DNR expert, to come in and kind of explain it better to us. Cause in, in one part of the statute, it says we can use it for construction, but then when, then we've also been told that now this remaining money, we can't. And it can only be for pre-engineering and engineering, no studies or construction. So we just need some clarification on where we can use it, how we can use it and so forth like that. So that's, that's basically what we talked about. Is that kind of what we, you got anything else to add to that, Phil? Okay, I won't ask. Good. All right. And then I had a historical society meeting and just the one big thing that's coming up, October 11th, is the, uh, so-called last event in the pavilion. So the historical society is running that. There's going to be, uh, I, I, I don't know if I have the times exactly right, but 11:30, I believe Bingo is going to start. It's going to be an all-day event. Then they're going to have, uh, I think Matt Brink is going to talk a little bit, I think in between a few things. And then, uh, Zeke, uh, from the, Zeke, what's Zeke's last name? He used to be there on the radio. Foaming, he's going to be the MC, so he's, he's excited to do that. He's also on the historical society board. We're going to have the polka band starting after, right around two. Then there's going to be this band called these, those 60's guys, they're going to play 60's music. Then there's a Buddy Holly impersonator that's going to do a little, a few, few little deals. And then, uh, um, Rick, Rick and Roman, Roman and Rick are going to play, uh, Rick Adams and Roman, I can't remember Roman's last name. Dan Brecky is going to play and then 32 below will play. So it should be a really good event. There's going to be food. There's going to be all kinds of other entertainment stuff. And if anybody would like to sponsor it, you can purchase a yard sign and it'll have your name on it. Or if you have a business, you can do that. There's other, there's levels of sponsorship too. If anybody's interested, they just can get a hold of Becky and do that. The October 11th. I wanted to, you know, have a big production and blow the pavilion up at the end, but they, they didn't, didn't go for that.
Mr. Chair, just on getting back to earlier highway discussion about the lake park, they are paving. So Centro Specialties is, um, paving currently. There were some sidewalks just poured. I mean, it, the sidewalks and the curb and gutter is still, there's still patchwork all over it. It's. It's really, it's really, I think, difficult for them to be paving, but they, they heard, Central Specialties heard the displeasure, and they're pushing forward even through, even though they're not, it's not the best for them right now when the, when some of that curb and gutter's not finished. So I'm really, really cautious on how that end project's gonna look, how those curb and gutters are gonna line up with paving and, and, because it's, it's not, it's, they're, I, I wanna thank Central Specialties for pushing this, but the, the curb and gutter is not done. And it's, and you're gonna come in after the fact and try to do that, it's, it's not gonna be, it's not, it, the flow has been terrible on this project. And there's still piles of dirt, and, and it's, and we're, what, two weeks away from Pumpkin Fest? And I know Central realizes how important that is, but it, it's, it's still not a good project, so.
Yep. So I also was at the AMC policy meeting, and I'm on the safety, public safety committee. And one big thing that is going to happen here, August, August 1st of next year, is in 2024, the legislature voted to change the delinquency, juvenile delinquency age from 10 to 13, and that's a huge deal. Because what that, then, then they are, anybody that's under the.
Wasn't it 13 to 10?
No, it's 10 to 13. So that's a big deal, because now all of those kid, children that are under 13 are, will be sent to child protection. And really, there, there's a lot of resources constraints for that, there's a lot of legal mismatch framework, there's statutory limitations on, on, on some of those things. So some, some other states that have lowered their age to like 11, or raised their age to like 11, or 12, or 13, have a clause in there that states if they commit a serious crime, like a sexual assault, or a murder, or homicide, they then will be taken care of by the juvenile courts. So they got some work to do. There's, the funding is a big deal, the, 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 what are we gonna do, where, who's gonna take care of these? What, what can they do if they go to child protection? What, are they gonna make a clause that the serious crimes are run through juvenile court? I don't, I don't know, they don't know that yet, but.
Well, and one, one of the things they've talked about in, at our West Central Regional Juvenile Center meetings is, where do you put them?
Yeah.
You know, if, if they're getting into trouble, you can't, you can, you will no longer be able to put them in a detention center.
And some of them are not, you, you think of a 12-year-old, you think of a small kid, but some of these are, you know, almost adult-sized and very, so.
But we already have such a shortage of placements.
Yes.
Or, I mean, if, if, you know, whether it's a mental health placement, or behavioral placement, or whatever, whatever it is, you know, foster home placement, there, there is a shortage of all across the board, so.
And if it's serious, serious.
Yeah.
Serious crime or, or events, it's like, who, who wants to take those?
Who wants to take that in a placement, yeah, exactly. So that, that's just some issues that, that hopefully they, they're hoping to resolve that by, before it's implemented, but.
I also question the child protection part of it, like, how?
How do they do?
How is it a child protection response if it's? I don't, you know? It kind of contradicts what child protection is.
Yep, it does. Does anybody else have any more reports or correspondence? All right, let's move on to appointments, are there any appointments?
There are no, I don't have any appointments, but I just wanted to, to make note, we do have a, an opening in District 1 on the Planning Commission. Steve Lindo has, has resigned from the Planning Commission. So, and I, but I think that is, been advertised, right? So.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take this time just to thank Steve for his service to the committee. I mean, it was kind of, I'm sure, a difficult decision for him to, to step aside, and I don't know what his reasonings are, but I like, I like boards that have different opinions and present those opinions. Because if, if all five of us agreed up here, we wouldn't be very effective, in my opinion. So discussion and dialogue are important, and I hope we, hope we can find that in our next candidate, so. Thank you, Steve, for your service.
Yes, thanks, Steve. All right. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent.
So we have a motion by Barry, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, would you have any more discussion?
Just a note in the, in the, I see the recorders' fees are in the black again, so I mean, we need to, if you remember, they, they, we purged them from all their money in the past, so now they're, they're back in the, in the black, so keep an eye on.
All right, so we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all right, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to our county administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item, and just a reminder for today at 1:30, the Michelle Fishbach Outreach Representative, I believe is the title, will be here on site at 1:30. I did send a list of possible topic items to everybody. I also sent the invite out to department heads, and some of them had responded as well.
I'm gonna try to make it, but if I can't, would you, would you please express the concern for the soybean market? The local, the Minnesota soybean market is dependent on China buying soybeans, and they have about zero bushels right now. If we can't get my, the basis up in this area for, for soybeans, the basis is what it costs to ship, or what, what they deduct from your price when they ship, is a dollar fifty at West Central right now, a dollar fifty per bushel. Last year, I paid, I think, between 25 and 35 cents. So it's a, I mean, the prices aren't good, but that basis price is really kicking, kicking your, your price down there. So it's just something that, that our federal, our federal people have to figure out something and get that market back open.
As a reminder, in October, the county will be hosting the joint governance meeting, so we'll send out an invite for that.
Is that the first?
I believe, we decided it was the first, right? Yes, yes, I had also asked Steve to present on his organics program that he is rolling out. I was, I was thinking about having it potentially, and I had briefly spoken to Jim, having it at the highway building.
Yeah.
Another thing for Steve to talk, talk about, if it's that first week of October, I think it would be right before we have that recycling event?
Oh, yes.
No?
No, it would be.
Oh, shoot.
It would be.
Oh, it would be.
Never mind then. No, we need to advertise it.
Okay.
It's already done.
Never mind. I was thinking, I was thinking the same thing you were.
Carrie, would you send out a special invite? We have a new superintendent in Lake Park, Audubon, Dr. Randy Burquist.
Did you write that down? Okay. I was also at the Fall Policy Conference, and I attended the General Government. Really what they had covered there was, they had an assessor there, I believe he was from Ramsey County. They just spent a lot of time going through formulas and how they come to their market analysis and predictions and all of those. There was quite a bit of information.
Yeah, I think they said, at, at the policy committee somewhere, that Minnesota has the most complicated.
That was at MRC, I know.
Oh.
Was that?
The panel representative said they, they wanna change it, but soon as they think they can make some sort of change, you have a group of people screaming that that's their benefit, so. Whatever it is, whoever we, I mean, it's, it'd be us or whoever, so it, it is a.
Yeah, they spent a lot of time going through scenarios and, and how they come to their numbers and their figures, so. Also, time was, a lot of time was spent on potential budget shifts and awaiting, you know, federal information, and also then cannabis, you know, came back up as well, and there were some stories shared of different areas in Minnesota that are rolling out some cannabis businesses.
Did you know, I, I learned this, I think it was that Friday, I don't remember, oh, at the Public Health Meeting, that the tax for cannabis was part of the, a portion of it was supposed to go to the local government, and that is no longer?
I had heard that.
That now all, all taxes from cannabis goes to the state?
I had heard that, yes.
Yeah, we were supposed to get a good chunk.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a formula, so they changed that.
Yeah, they changed it now that all of the cannabis tax goes to the state. And then will come to the local government, so kind of.
We do the work.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of, what's that, bait and switch, they call it in sales?
Something along that line.
Get started, and, just kidding.
I also, I also met and spent some time with Ms. Lynch from the library. She'll be coming in October to be speaking more in-depth about their proposal or their request for funding.
At MRC, I think it was Bill Trammy County, said that they were gonna go back to the state minimum, which was hundreds of thousands of dollars reduction.
And can you?
Well, I think there was some discussion on that, or some, we'll have to wait and see what, what happens with that.
Right. So yes, I believe she's coming in, I believe it's the first meeting in October.
Okay.
When I was at the policy, Fall Policy Conference in General Government as well, I know Commissioner Hanson and I had signed up for that Lead With Purpose through AMC that they're sponsoring. They are also opening that up to department heads, so I will send out a message if we have any department heads here in Becker County that would be interested in attending that as well. So that will be forthcoming. Additional contacts, I've had some additional contacts regarding restricting wake boats. I know we had a presentation or discussion last, last meeting with regards to Fox Lake. I believe we're gonna have to probably have some further discussions about how we're gonna move forward with future requests, because I think we're gonna get future requests as well.
Yeah, I did attend the Sugar Bush Township Town Board meeting, and they, Big Sugar Bush is also moving towards a wakeboard surf, surface use, not surface use, surface water ordinance. And I believe there is also another lake, but I can't recall which, Pickle Lake, maybe, that is also considering it. So we know those lakes for sure. One thing in my conversation with Chuck Becker, that he wanted to make it clear, was that they are not on Big Sugar Bush there, and I believe it's the same on Fox Lake, they are not asking for it to, for, to ban the boats. What they are asking for is to ban, and maybe Barry can help me here, because I don't know what the, the correct wordage is, because I know nothing about wakeboards, ban where they put the water in the tanks and do the actual wake surfing. What is that called? And enact the wake boat? You're supposed to help me out, Barry.
You're, you're asking what one, another person's interpretation of something is, and I have no idea what they're talking about. I mean, should you ban, should you ban?
Where you put water in the?
Should you ban fishing boats that put water in the boat for live tanks?
No, I'm asking you to help me figure out what he's.
Well, they have ballaces.
Ballaces, thank you. Water in the ballaces, that's what they're trying to ban, is that you can't do that.
You can't have ballaces?
No, you can't put water in the ballaces and.
Well, I won't support any, I won't support any individual lake surface water ordinance. And I don't know if your sheriff wants to have 20 different ordinances for 50 different lakes and try to determine what's right and what's wrong on any specific lake, and especially on a lake that you have no public access. Another thing to note is, DNR will not enforce Becker County ordinances.
Nope, they will not.
So.
Correct.
I, I think it's a, I think it's a slippery slope if you wanna start going down and going lake by lake and saying what should be allowed on each different lake. Because there's groups out there that don't want fishing. Let's not let fishing on this lake, let's not let tubing on this lake, and let's not let bass boats that drop down there waste. Let's, let's not have pontoons that have sea legs. I mean, I, I have, there's lots of things that people don't want. Let's not have jet skis, let's not have skiing, let's not have, the list will go on and on.
Yep.
The last item in my report is, I know, I'll be working on this, but I, I believe we talked about October for some potential work sessions on budget, is that accurate?
Yes, correct.
And just for consensus, do we want to look at doing those on off-board weeks or following board? I know, I've heard both.
Well, I, I think these discussions are gonna be pretty much in-depth and at length.
I would agree.
With this board's decision on not reviewing new positions when they come vacant, when there's no review of a vacant position, which is terrible government, in my opinion, we have to look at each position and say, is this a valid position at budget time? And go through every position and say, is this one, how is it funded, who's paying for it? Is this, is this necessary? If you look at our tax levy increase coming up, that's, you, we have to look at now. Unless you wanna say, when they're, in, in common sense, if there's a vacancy, that's when you wanna eliminate a position or not, in my opinion. You wanna look at the eliminating position at budget time now? If you don't wanna review it when it's, when it's vacant, then now is the time to review budget positions to see if they're necessary. So you look at, I mean, you can look at the Fargo budget, they've, they cut many positions. I mean, you just look at, there are, there are positions now being cut out of government because of the levies are just, you know, the tax burden's getting to be too great. So this is gonna be a long session. It's gonna be every, every position, every job, it's gonna have to be justified.
How, how do you do that when you're, so I'm just sitting here, how do I look at a position in one of our, in Human Services and decide whether it's needed or not? How, how would I decide that? That's, that's a really tough one for me.
Your other option, then, is to just not make a decision and let the department head put whatever jobs they want out there.
Well, we, we already have these positions, our county is not getting any smaller.
It's not hard to justify a position if you have the numbers.
You guys did this, you guys were doing this when I came. You had your fingers in all of these departments, and everybody was ready to go on strike, and every, and we were putting people on part-time. We had, we were having part-time people, so they, we didn't have to have any health insurance or anything on them. We did everything we could to make sure that we didn't get any good employees here. And, and I've talked to, I've had employees, I don't have any, but I've had employees all my life, and I went out and actually talked to people who have hundreds of employees, and on how, how to retain them. And so it's important to me, we're, we're paying good wages, it's important that we have good employees. There's no way I can go into the, into any department, auditor, treasurer, and decide what should be done there. I don't work there. I, I have to lean on my supervisors for, for this information. And if I'm gonna get in there and start making part-time positions, we're gonna go back, right back to the big, and this is, this is why we're in trouble now, is because we were sold behind on wages. Nobody wanted to pay anything, and so we had a wage study that showed we were way behind, and now we have to make that up. I, I'm gonna tell you, I, I don't know how I would go into each department and do that, I can't see that.
Well, when you have a department head showing you what, how the job is paid for, and saying this job promotes, gets this much revenue, and so the cost is this, I mean, it's not, some of these jobs aren't gonna be hard to justify, most of them aren't. But if you can't, if you can't wrap your arms around what the jobs are, and what the performance, I mean, what, what we need, I mean, that's, that's our job.
I don't know how, I'm gonna tell you, I don't know how you'd do it, I'd have to be there, I'd have to, I'd have to watch. I'd have to be in, in that department. There's no way I could know that. And if you can know that, if you can know which jobs, you're way better at this than.
So, Mr. Chair, perhaps my question is, it sounds as though it probably would be a lengthy discussion, so my recommendation perhaps would be on and off-board week.
Correct.
So that's what I'll look to schedule.
You know, there are things you can do, you look at other counties and the, the number of workers per, I mean, there's lots of things that you can compare to about how many employees you have for this, and, and it's presented every time you have a new employee put up, put up there. I mean, that, that's being promoted, that's being asked to add an employee. There, I mean, we cut an employee in Highway because, you know, Mr. Knutson went and did some homework and said, you know, I think we're overstaffed, and we, we cut that. Now, you have, you have to do research, yeah, you have to, you have to do homework. I mean, you have to understand things, so, I mean, is it, are we gonna cut anyone? I don't know. Are we gonna cut any Human Services? Probably not, I mean, that, we are, we are being asked to do more. But I mean, if you're not gonna look at it, if you're not gonna look at it when you have turnover, when you have a person that is moving on, then you have to look at it at budget time. You can't, I can't just say, department can do what, you know, I'm not gonna get involved and not understand and let you hire, you know, as many as you think you should. That's, I mean, that's my opinion, so.
Okay, I will work on scheduling some in October. We'll start maybe with the second week in October.
Okay.
Between board members. That's all I have on my report. The next item that I have for consideration is the resolution to. That's all I have on my report. The next item that I have for consideration is the Resolution 2C. This is for the elected officials' salaries that were negotiated with the finance team.
Do we, I'll entertain a motion.
Do you have percentage of increases?
I'm sorry?
Do you have percentage of increase?
I didn't put that.
I think they're right, right around six and a half.
Yes.
Yeah.
Based off of what the other employees are currently getting.
I'm sure you looked at the gap between the elected official and the person, their assistant or.
Yes.
And. You know, you look at these numbers and then say, holy mackerel. I just saw on, I think it was on a, one of the news stations was saying how much superintendents are making at schools. And they're, they had a list of those and how much, and I know currently what head of Lakewood Mental Health makes. And these numbers, I mean, I, these numbers are huge. I do know like the attorneys, the, the state's offering more than that for their attorney. So I mean, it's hard to, you can't argue, can't argue that. I don't, I don't know. I'm sure you looked at the sheriff's salaries were competitive and, and that's where the sheriffs are and the same with auditor, auditor treasurer. It's.
Yeah, the sheriff, we actually looked at all of the comparing counties that we used and put him at the fifth-ish compared to, which is what we have been doing with the deputies. So that he's at the right, because there was not a lot of difference between him and the undersheriff.
Yeah.
The deputy sheriff.
Deputy.
Chief, deputy?
You know what I'm, you know what I'm.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Correct.
Mine's not working well.
That, that's, yeah, that's basically based that. And then the six and a half percent was the, was the baseline that we looked at and where they would fall in the market.
And I believe one thing that we had looked at for Brian is like 80% of the judges' salaries. That would have.
So he, he would be, was it 80, was it 86 or 80, point, 85.6 or 86.5% of the.
I remember back.
Federal judges.
I believe, I can't say this for factual, but I believe back, way back, that one of the judge, one of the county attorneys was based on 90% of the judge's salary. And I do, I also want to say that I talked to a, an attorney in town that said they considered applying for the judgeship, but it was a significant pay cut that they would have to take to be a judge rather than a private attorney in, in the business. And he said, significant. And I'm like.
And then the, the public defender's office person, it's probably about the same. Not, 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 they had, oh, yeah, but it's probably about the same difference between that and the judge. We're rough, we're pretty close. Yeah.
I mean, I think our elected officials no longer get longevity.
Yep.
And I think if we're, if we're going to, with our wage study, we have to continue to look at our elected officials to make sure that we're paying them.
They have to be higher than their.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, yeah.
And they, it needs to be competitive across the state. That's what it needs to be. If you want good people, you have to pay for them. Unfortunately, wages are, are high. Health insurance is high. Everything is extremely high.
And we have a very busy sheriff's department.
Yes, we do.
Typically with a very busy sheriff's department comes a very busy county attorney's office. So I mean, I think we want to make sure that we keep good staff. So, without, I'm making a motion to approve 2C.
So we have a motion by Erica. Do we have a second? I, I will second. All right. So we have a motion, a second. Do we have any more discussion? All right. So Commissioner Hanson will take a roll call vote. You go first.
Yes.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, Carrie.
All right. My last item is, this has been a topic numerous times with our HRIS system, that is our payroll system, as well as our HR package. As you recall, just by history, '22 and '23 was the rollout of the UKG system at that time. Not all of the modules for HR have been rolled out, and that was due to concerns that we've had as far as how it would function. So I did put, there's, there's a lot of numbers in your packet, and I think I probably put too much information in. It probably became more confusing than anything. The difficult part with this is comparing two systems, and then you have your base rate. You also have your quarterly or your, your ongoing charges for employees that are on your system. So I tried to better summarize it on the memo that I gave you. So this is really comparing what we currently have with the UKG system and the modules that we are currently paying for through HR, with the caveat that we're not using some of those modules when we've had discussions with UKG about rolling out what we haven't rolled out and reasons why we're concerned about doing that. They also want to charge an additional implementation fee for those modules that we're already paying for to roll them out now because it's late, later. I will say, back when I was in the role of HR, there was, there were some delays and there were lots of emails back and forth with, you know, UKG asking about the rollout. And there's a lot of turnover at UKG. It was just, there was a lot of communication issues. Probably my bigger concern is that, just in general, I know this has been a work in progress for a very long time. When I first brought this to the courthouse committee, and I think it was last spring, and talked about this. And, and really what we were agreeing to do at that time was to really take a hard look at UKG, have lots of meetings with them, which we did, and try to figure out, to try to get the system to function. To be honest, we're not, I, I think Mary would say that payroll is, is functioning pretty good. But again, if you go back to the goal that we had originally was to have a functioning system all the way through from HR to payroll, from hire to retire. So, again, Paycom, yeah, we did go out for an RFP, so that's not, it's not a secret. And they, they were the ones that responded back when we did the RFP, when we were thinking about doing this. So, at the end of the day, comparing full system to full system, it would come in lower than the UKG overall.
We also talked yesterday that there were two, was it Benefits Connect and one other one that we would no longer need to pay for?
We're not currently paying for Benefits Connect. Last year, if you recall, we did do our benefits on UKG, and we had errors and we had issues. So there's a lot of reluctance to use that system again. I think you may be, Applicant Stack is our recruiting software that we're currently paying for. They do have that module that we are paying for through UKG that we could, that we did actually do, actually back when I was in the HR role. The difficulty with that is it doesn't do veterans' preference pointing that we're required to do. So you'd have, that would be a manual process for our department.
Well, I know, I know you, we've been trying to make, you've been trying to make this work and because you and I have talked about it several times. And I think you're fair and intelligent, and I think that.
Well, thank you.
Well, I think you do a good job here. And I, I don't understand the whole system, but I, I, I do know if it's not working for you, and, and I know you've been trying to make it work. I'm going to have to go with your recommendation on it.
Yeah, to be honest.
I think, when, anytime you have to do something manually in today's world.
You have errors.
Yeah, you're more likely to have errors, you're, and, and it takes time. Like, we shouldn't be doing anything, I'm not going to say anything.
Most things.
Yes, most things manually, if you have a system for it. And we need to have a system that functions good across the whole board of what, what it is that we need to, if we're paying for it, it should be functioning well.
Yeah, and, and we, and we looked at, you know, I know with payroll, we looked at, should we have payroll just be on the system? And then, you know, look at other systems, but then you're, you're really not getting the role. The systems don't talk to each other necessarily. So you're, you're back to.
Manually.
Manually. So, my preference would have been if we could have gotten this to work, but a lot of time and effort's been put into this, and I just think it's time.
So you're looking for a motion?
I am.
I'll make a motion to go with the HRIS system.
I'll second.
Paycom.
Paycom. We got to put Paycom in there.
I didn't put that in.
Paycom.
So we have a motion by Erica for the HRIS system Paycom and a second by Richard. Do we have any further discussion?
Want to say what timeline I mean, because I think timelines are critical.
Time, yes, we had, I'm sorry.
I think it just should be at, with the best interest. I mean, I don't, I don't, I just don't want to limit our, and, and put us in too much of a time crunch, so.
Yeah, when we have open enrollment coming up.
I, I just work with however you need to work with this. It's kind of where I was going with this.
Yeah, and I had communication with Paycom if this were to be the decision of this board. And I was very insistent that they be on site for the implementation. And I do have a tentative schedule for our rollout and for benefits and year-end reporting.
Just, I just want to make sure that we weren't going to tie your hands too much to, to do this and make sure you have the time that's needed, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
With that, I, I want to thank our staff because this is going to be another burden on the staff.
It is.
And unfortunately, we're at a point where we, I, you know, I think it's time just to move on. And unfortunately, while one part of it's working, those staff are going to have to relearn a new system. And that, I mean, none of us like to do that. I mean, we don't, I don't even like changing phones because it's, I don't like. So thank you for the hard work that they're going to have to do to, to get up to speed on this new system.
Any more discussion on, on the motion? All right. So we'll have a roll call. Commissioner Hanson, please go first.
Yes.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
All right. We are going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to come back and we will do Houston Engineering and, and do that and respect their time and get them done. And then we'll do our auditor treasurer after that.
What is that, Bill?
In session. I'd like to, I'd like to do a, do a, for a personal note or for our, we had, we had a tragic event happen last week with the, the shooting of Charlie, what's Charlie's last name?
Kirk.
Kirk. And, and the federal government, the federal government has recognized that we're putting the flags at half-mast. So I think it's appropriate for us to just recognize that, that we're not, we don't like the fact that people are getting shot. Whether it's a political thing or not a political thing, it, it's just not okay for our society. If you don't agree with someone, you, it's not okay for you to, to do that kind of violence to somebody. So if we could just take a moment of silence to recognize that we are, for his family, his, his wife and his two children that are, have to deal with this now, so we'll just do that. All right, thank you. So let's move on to.
Mr. Chair, just to comment on, on that, you know, I think it goes all the way up, you know, from top to bottom, leadership has to stop this, this violence or this, this antagonistic point of view. And I think we mentioned it earlier when we were talking about the assassination of Melissa Hortman and her husband and, and dog and attempt, I mean, that person had long list. This is just not how the United States is. We are, we can disagree, we can argue, and different views on whatever topic it is should be accepted and, and being able to work with those same people on the next issue you could agree on. I mean, we're, we are all so individual in our beliefs. There, it's, it's, I saw something, the, there was something, a bald eagle's flying and the, the left wing has to know that they need the right wing to survive. I mean, you, you both, we need both parties and, and unfortunately, I think, you know, we're not, we should not be promoting any type of violence and just that type of action. So again, it's a terrible tragedy and, and the leadership in our country and our state and our counties have to direct that this is not acceptable. Whichever side you're on, this, this type of behavior is just not acceptable.
And I just, I just want to make a note for those that aren't aware of what Braver Angels is. I learned of Braver Angels at one of our, I believe it was our first AMC conference. And Braver Angels really is bipartisan, where you bring people from the left, people from the right, together to try to get a, get along and, and see both sides. And they posted something the day of it, and I just want to read it. It says, "Together we can define for this country what courageous citizenship means. Modeling a constructive civic response that rebuilds trust and puts us on a path towards solving problems together. Now is the time and our country depends on it." So I encourage everybody to look at what Braver Angels is about. And it's really about bringing the sides together and, and getting, we're never going to agree, just like what we've talked about here, we're never always going to agree. But we have to have a, a point where we can at least get along and not blame everybody for every other problem. So that's all I have to say.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to Steve, our environmental, and let's, if you want to go right into your, the Houston Engineering report, we can do that, too. He's. Yeah, let's do that right away since he's online here.
You have a new purse?
He's got a new purse, it's an organic purse.
I got some for you. Have some suspense here.
Yes, please, Sam, go ahead.
Morning, can you guys hear me? Are, are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good, just want to make sure of that. Well, good morning, appreciate the time to be able to talk with you all this morning. We do have a quick presentation here with me this morning. I have Kyle Tenaple from our, from our office also. We're both transportation planners with Houston Engineering. I'm going to talk to you today about the Heartland Trail Routing Study. I really, really feel like this has been a really good, positive project for the area. The engagement's been really, really good. You know, the project continues as we try to find ways to find the best possible routing study between Dunlop's and Buck's Mill. We're really aiming to enhance connectivity and recreational opportunities for the region. You know, it's really a project focused on developing a trail route that considers the needs of walkers, bikers and snowmobilers of Becker County and the area. And so we're looking for, you know, the goal to, for the trail, for it to be a valuable link for both residents and visitors of the area. Next slide. So we've had a steering committee that's helped steer us along the way and helped us greatly in understanding how we need to move forward. The steering committee meeting, committee has met five times so far. We'll have at least one other meeting. Just want to make sure that everybody knows the people that have been involved with the study from, from the beginning and through, through the entire study. Next slide. Also, just important to understand and keep in mind as we have throughout this entire project, the, the overall long-term plan, this is from your Becker County Master Trail Plan. Now, that plan wasn't zooming in, this is looking at the 10,000-foot level. We're kind of zooming in a little closer to identify, you know, some particular routes that we think are, you know, best work for the area and with the goals that we have in mind. But we continue to look at, you know, what we're going to, what's going to continue to the east and west because you're kind of right in the middle, the segment is then continuing to the west to Cormorant and, you know, then also to the east, the segment that was just completed. All those things are being taken into consideration. Slide. So another important point that we wanted to make to everybody as we're doing this is what are the trail design expectations. You know, we want to make sure, you know, this is the Heartland Trail, this is the goal. You know, we want to look at a, a trail segment, you know, shared use path or side path. There's a couple of different kinds of side path that you've been looking at depending on the amount of right-of-way or section that you have. Or it can be a, a trail section in itself separated completely from the roadway. The side path itself could be a little closer to the roadway. And that section, it might be a curb and gutter section that will be out to develop. Or it could be with additional right-of-way on the other side of the, of the ditch. So each section we're looking at, and you'll hear us talking about those things. Some, the next slide, designs to avoid, you know, things that we're not really looking at as part of the actual trail segment is, you know, we're not looking at bike lanes or bike shoulders or shared lanes. It's actually a separated facility. That's the goal of this entire study is to look at that and go from there. So next slide. Now I'm going to turn it over to Kyle and just kind of get into public engagement in the trail alternatives.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Like Sam said, my name's Kyle Tenaple. I'm also a transportation planner with Houston Engineering. Just wanted to go through our public engagement. So this is on our website, our project website that we put up for the public to comment on. It showed all the universal trail alternatives that we looked at at the beginning of the process and had people comment. We really wanted to get the public feedback in our decision-making on what side or what, what trails we wanted to look at at a closer level. So we had over 2,000 website visits, 1,200 unique website visitors. We had 105 comment pins on the map. And then we also had 26 comments on, on other various input opportunities when we looked at more zoomed-in concepts. So we feel really good about, about the engagements. We also had an open house on August 25th that was well-attended, had about 50 or 60 attendees. We looked at those preferred concepts a little bit closer and got, got more comments on it. So we, we feel good about the, the public engagement section and it, and it played a part in where we zoomed in and, and looked a little bit further. This is just another slide that shows all the alternatives that we looked up at the beginning. We wanted to have some sort of screening process to, to narrow down our preferred routes. And so this is what this is. So the yellow and orange colors are less preferred, where the green and blue are more preferred. And it was based off of these scoring criteria. So this is how we scored each segment. That included, you know, area of right-of-way, encroachments, driveways with, with, along the route, grading needs, separation, traffic conflicts, how the public thought about the route, environmental conflicts and directness of trail and trail length. So I'm going to go back to the thing just so you can look at it again. And so from the, based on the public comments and the scoring criteria, we narrowed down our preferred concepts to the east side of Lake Sally and Melissa, kind of along that Highway 59 stretch. And what we really heard from the open house of public comment is, you know, the, the people like would like to see it off 59 as much as possible. But just understanding that 59 is going to be the best suiting for, you know, more separation, less grading, less cost, stuff like that. So I think we, in our preferred concepts, we, we did a good job of both of avoiding 59 when possible, then also using 59, you know, as a, as a secondary route or just to switch back in some areas. So I can go, so we, we're going to go into our preferred concepts here. We separated them into the north section, middle section and south section. And there's a couple, couple routes on, on each section. So I'll go through those quickly and I'll switch over here to a more zoomed-in picture. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So for the north section, starting up at Dunlop's, we really looked at 59 and Highway 59 and Highway 22. We really got most of our engagement along Highway 59 and the Lake Sally Campground, which isn't shown here. People are, are looking to kind of use that, use that area for trails. And so we talked with the WE Fest, Fest folks and they're all on board. There's a couple, couple problems, I guess, with that. There's going to be a revocable lease on that trail. So we didn't think that'd be suitable for the Heartland Trail. But we think that there's going to be a possibility to have a local route there. So that's kind of what we hear. We didn't get much engagement on Highway 22. It's just going to be more cost. It's going to be a curb and gutter section. You know, you have some driveways up on this north section, got to cross a bridge. At this section, got some wetlands to compete with. So Highway 22 is going to be longer and it's going to be more expensive. And so that's going to be kind of our secondary route where our preferred route's going to be 59 and then having that local option as well on that Lake Sally campground. So the Highway 59 section is going to be, you know, 30 feet or greater of separation. And so that's going to be coming out to about $50 linear foot. Moving on to the middle section, these are the two preferred routes continuing on. Highway 59 is that secondary route. Then the preferred route is going to be on this Highway 17 on the west side, next adjacent to the golf course until the Fleet Market, switching over to the east side. And we feel like there's an opportunity to kind of switch back and use right-of-ways. And, you know, when, when it doesn't work on 17, switch over to 59. So we think that's an option. And then more on the seven, the southern half of the Highway 17, that's going to be more of your curb and gutter section. You're just going to have to get closer to your road, your roadway with the, with the driveways. And the curb and gutter section's going to be coming out to about $90 a lineal foot compared to the $50 for a non-curb and gutter section. Moving on to the south section, there's actually three routes we have identified on, on this route. So picking up from, from where the middle section left off, the preferred route is going to be South Melissa Drive on the south section. That's, and there's also an opportunity to be looking at this high line. And there's a, we understand there's a wetland concern there. So there's going to have to be a, a boardwalk which will increase costs. But then the secondary option being along Highway 59 again. Just going up to the South Melissa, it would go be on South Melissa Drive and then cutting south on Mill Pond Drive on the north side. So moving back to the presentation. And so our public engagement phase two, we updated the website to include all those concepts and got, got comments on it. We visited with the Recreation Advisory Committee and also the Heartland Trail Committee. And just to echo what I said before, people are looking to get it off Highway 59, you know, trail, trail users as much as possible. But then also using that as your, your kind of, your spine to, to fall back on. So there's an opportunity to stay off 59 as possible with the WE Fest property, with the local loop, Highway 17, and then also the power line or Melissa Drive. So I'm going to kick it back over to Sam to do the slide now.
Yeah, so from there, you know, we've had, as Kyle talked about, some additional meetings, Recreation Advisory Committee, the Heartland Trail Committee. We've had recently Steering Committee Number Five, of course, the meeting here today. We would expect one more meeting with the Steering Committee to finish up as we'll put together that final report. And that report will include a recommended concept level, cost estimates and, and get you ready for that next phase, which will be getting towards our final design. We think the, what's important here is that we leave you some options. As we move forward a little bit, there'll be kind of, as Kyle was talking about, we provided what you see as the recommended alternative. But then there's typically one other alternative as you're going through final design that you can fall back on if things are, if there's things that aren't working out with landowners or costs or other things. So we think that kind of flexibility is, is something we wanted to build into it, too. So with that, I want to leave time for questions. Take any questions that you have at this time.
Commissioner.
Melissa Drive, Rob, is that going to be all curb and gutter?
So the, the question was, if I heard it right, was the Melissa Drive one going to be all curb and gutter section?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so when you look at the Melissa Drive sec, section, there's some areas along there where I think it's going to vary, some areas where it's fairly open. We think there's some opportunities where it can be off on the other side of the ditch. There's some other areas that you'll see where you get into some grove of trees, where the trees pull in pretty close, where, yes, it might have to be pulled in. But that's something that's going to be determined as we go through final design. So we think it's going to be a little bit of both there.
Mr. Mr. Chair, Sam, would you please describe what curb and gutter means in a trail system?
Kyle, if you could go kind of zoom in on that a little bit, yeah. So going back to this, you see how the side path, the trail design expectations, that one in the upper right-hand corner, that's what it would kind of look like. It's very similar to what you guys have on the trail section, the existing one that's going, coming down from Detroit Lakes along the lake there. You know how it's, how that was developed as, as the road was reconstructed. It would look kind of similar to that.
But there was some discussion on it would be narrower, though, wouldn't be as wide, correct? Is my, correct in that?
Well, we would still want to set it up as a 12-foot section if it was going to be a Heartland Trail, the, the actual trail. But the buffer is going to be that kind of six-foot, you know, to the roadway, so.
Mr. Chair, I've listened, this is the third time I've heard this presentation. The one, the one, I, I think this may be the best, but I, I also want to make sure that we don't just go with the path of least resistance as opposed to the best path. One concern is, you know, if we go along Highway 59, the current trail comes under Highway 59. And then if we head, head, we're coming out from the city, if we head south on Highway 59, I mean, there's going to be no reason for people to go to Dunlop's. It won't be on the trail. It would be like a dead end for bike riders, walkers, whoever. I, I just, I really feel it's important to somehow get over to Dunlop's. And then we, we talked about a concept of maybe doing a loop through WE Fest, the WE Fest property there. But then it wouldn't be, you know, the, the full Heartland Trail thing there. But do a loop there for Melissa Sally residents could, could come up to Dunlop's, do a loop and head back to their home. City of Detroit Lakes people could come out to Dunlop's, do a loop into WE Fest and then up and back into the city. I, I, I think that would be something that is very appropriate if we have to take the path, Highway 59, without going into Dunlop's. I, I really want to make sure that Dunlop's is included. sure that Dunlop's is included and, and used, uh, because it is, it's just a gem for the county.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good point, uh, Phil, um, to make sure that we include that as part, part of the final conceptual plan. Um, we haven't had time to change these maps yet, but yes, that will be included, and then that kind of plan, if, if, if everybody is in agreement.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think that's, that's a good idea. I think with the restrictions and, and I, you know, I think a permanent Heartland Trail going through WeFest is probably not, and I, from what you've said, is probably not, um, doable, just because, you know, they don't probably, they wanna have some abilities to close it and have some abilities to get it out of there. But, uh, I mean, hopefully that, hopefully that can go, you know, we can have a, the non-Hartland Trail go through there, um, and hopefully it lasts, you know, our lifetimes. But I can understand their reluctance to give a permanent, you know, to be permanent through their property.
I, I agree with that, too, but then at our Heartland Trail meeting, uh, Kelsey brought up a really good point that there's gonna be a big issue during WeFest going on fifty-nine, too. Um, they might have to close that. So it, it might, it might be the same issue.
They can't clo- they can't close that if it's, if that's, if that trail is ours or the, the state's, they can't close, they can't close it.
But yeah, I, I don't, I mean, it might not be usable, though. It may, it can be open, but it might not, just for the simple reason that.
It's in the Highway fifty-nine corridor. I don't know how they could, they can't close fifty-nine.
And then, and then also that bridge, too, that walkway bridge, they have to figure out how to get to navigate that, um, which they will, I'm sure, but, but that was just some issues. That, that, I mean, we have a, yeah, cuz the WeFest trail, if it goes through WeFest, there is about a week period where that would be closed. And we did ask the question, too, is, is this, is this able to be done? And there are other state trails that are closed through private property for certain periods of time, um, for events like WeFest, for example, yeah.
Mister Chair, Commissioner Nelson, um, you, you're right, Barry. Uh, our, our thought was that people aren't gonna wanna use the trail because there's so much traffic, but along Highway fifty-nine, you're right, you can't close that.
Yeah, you can't.
Close on WeFest, that's their property. I don't care what kind of.
Yep.
Agreements you get with them, um, they can close it. So, and that would not.
It, I guess, the word would be better be usable, yeah, during WeFest.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sam and Kyle.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on. Um, Steve, you have another item.
Uh, we do, I guess in relationship to this, the next step, I guess if the board has any comments or thoughts that they want us, when we continue to talk about this in the next committee meetings, before we finally come up with a final plan, should let us know, and we'll bring it back, and then maybe, yeah, the final concept comes out, well, then, do you want that brought back here? Be a question.
Probably.
Yeah, I'd say yes, sir.
Okay. I did have a couple other things. We've talked about this in committee, and then at the last board meeting, uh, the board gave approval to have, uh, electronics recycling or a special event where we can offer or suspend tipping fees for certain items, and then attempt to raise awareness. And so we came up with this idea of October first, second, third, and fourth, to have a event where we're gonna accept all e-waste at no charge. And then after that, it would go back to your normal tip fees. Uh, this would also take place out of Osage, too, so that would be on that Saturday. We'll take all types of e-waste, which is gonna be your screens. There's gonna be a limit to five per individual when they're bringing them in. Other than that, we'll, we'll take them and process them and.
Is that five per day or total? Like, are you keeping track of?
No, five per person bringing it in. So if somebody has, wants to make two trips, we're not gonna track it.
Gotcha.
I think it's, I think it's important to note that the east locations only open on one day. I think, I think there should be more separation on that, just when you look at when and where, um, just to hi- make sure that people don't go there. We're thinking that it's both sites on all those days, but I, I didn't notice that till you just mentioned.
Mister Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I, I didn't realize that Osage wasn't open o- only Tuesday and Saturday, so I learned something through this process, too, putting this together. But, you know, w- w- we'll, we'll roll this out. It'll be for five days, actually four, cuz one of them is a Sunday in DL, and only the one day in Osage. But, um, uh, w- w- we'll learn from this. Uh, we wanna do this with other recyclables going down the road, depending on, uh, you know, the cost. But, uh, w- we'll work on this. This is a trial run, kinda, to see how it works and how people respond to it, in my opinion, anyway.
Sounds good.
So what we'll do is we'll keep track of the volume that comes in, and we'll bring it back through our committee as far as what the impact was, or if we get discerned that there's a noticeable increase for that event. And then that will help guide us for future decisions. Any questions on this?
Nope.
No? Okay. Uh, that's, that's all I had. Other than I just updated the board, our ga- our organics recycling program, we're rolling that out. I sent out a schedule, um, tomorrow. This is the reason I brought this up. We're gonna be distributing out, uh, these containers to the public. And, uh, the public sites, we have stands out there with carts. Uh, next week, we'll start doing collections.
Are those big enough? Just kidding.
So if anybody's interested in these, as far as.
Is there a cost for people to purchase those gr- those tubs there?
Nope.
No, they're free. We bought these, we had grant funds to.
And the liners and the pickup, it's all.
Are they, and they are open for what residents? Any residents?
Any residents, yeah. So we'll give some bags.
Are they the same as the doggy bags?
You know, that's a good question.
They look, they look about the same.
Yeah, they're, well, I'm sure they're different, but, uh, they're, they're designed for this.
We separate our organics, but we just throw in a dirt pile.
A lot of people do that, too. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
You know, I think the big thing, uh, uh, Mister Chair, the big thing is, you know what? I, I, I do care where organics go, but we do not want them in landfills. We don't wanna be transporting them if we can take care of them on our own. I mean, that's, that's the purpose of all this. Um, it's, it's, it's a better way.
Yeah, some people, some people don't have the ability to just throw it in their yard like I do. I mean, I just throw it on the edge of the yard. We do, I have a dirt pile that I throw dirt over the top of the recycle, or the gorgonics every once in a while, so.
So as, as we move this forward and we get it implemented, we'll be bringing it back through committee reports as the number of businesses and the interest in this, uh, I was just down in Cormorant last night, we were talking about this with, uh, Church. So there's, there's interest in different parts.
And, and we'll be using that at our business, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Steve. All right, let's move on to Mary, our auditor treasurer.
Steve, do you have your phone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first resolution I have is Resolution nine twenty-five two eight to set the twenty-twenty-six proposed tax levy. We're looking at a nine percent increase, an increase of two million five hundred and twenty-three dollars and seven hundred and, or two hundred, two million five hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars. This, um, we also need to set the hearing for the budget discussion with the public December eleventh at six o'clock here in the boardroom.
Well, I don't think anyone's real excited about a nine percent increase, that's for sure.
No.
I, I wouldn't support this today, but I talked, talked to Carrie at AMC a little bit, and she has some concerns about some things that, that might, for, for finance. I think we're gonna be, I mean, I truly believe unless we've, we will be a little bit lower, not significantly lower, but we will be a little bit lower this, than this on our final. Um, but I think Carrie has, wants to look at a couple things to make sure that they're budget correct. Um, and I think I will give her, I mean, I will accept that we will preliminary go with a nine, and if there's, if that finding it, if you find that there's not a more, that it is as presented, then I think we are gonna be looking at, I'm at least, I mean, for sure a half to a percent lower. I mean, this is, this is, that's my goal on the final.
I, I would support that, too, yeah.
So I think we can move forward with, I mean, again, I hope, I hope that we're under nine percent when we do a final, but I will make motion to approve two A.
So we have a motion by Barry for two A. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Erica. Do we have any more discussion?
Mister Chair, um, I, I will not support a nine percent levy increase, um, like, kinda like Barry said, I don't know where we can get it from here, but we're, you know, we've given our department heads a lot of leeway to, 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 to come up with these budgets, but nine percent is not acceptable to me. Um, I understand we wanna bring our employees up to speed with pay. Richard, you're in Barry's, you guys both made excellent points, and we talked about this an hour ago. Um, I can't support nine percent. Um, go back, department head, you find ways to cut this, because this is, this is not acceptable to the taxpayers of Becker County, not the people of, of our county. And I don't know, maybe I'm going out on a limb here. This is my first time going through this, but, uh, um, I, I won't support, I'll, I'll support this resolution, but we've got three months to get this, um, in place, and I'm suggesting that our department heads find a way to, to, to get some lower stuff, uh, get some cost savings to the taxpayer. Um, a lot of our employees are, are also taxpayers of our county, so I mean, this is, this is not acceptable to me.
You know, I don't like it either, but if you look at where we're at as a county, as a state, I don't care if it's, if it's, um, government or it's private industry. And I, I agree with you, Phil, it's, it's too high. But when I look at my own business and what it costs me now to operate compared to what it cost me before COVID, there's so inflation, there's so many things, health insurance, wages, there's so many things that go into this. You know, I, I don't know that you're just gonna be able to tell people to, to go ahead and make some cuts and save this money. That'd be nice if we could. Um, I, I, I don't like it either, but I don't like, I don't like any of it, where, where any of it is. And if you talk to any big business owner, they're all, everybody's having the same problem that we are. And just wages and insurance is, yeah, if you're gonna start cutting positions and cutting people, well, that's a whole nother story. I, I'm not sure how that's gonna work out for us, but, yeah, I don't like it, but I don't, I don't see any other way around it. And if, all you have to do is look at inflation for one thing, and, and see what things cost, and, and we know we're, you know, we, the county has to run one way or another, so that's, that's.
And, and then we are also gonna have, uh, second, second Tuesday in October, is that correct? Or third, yeah.
That's what we talked about.
We will have a good discussion on this and figure out what we can do.
Mister Chair, um, Barry and I sat in at MRC, uh, down at our pop-falk policy committee meetings, and one of the questions was, we went around the room and talked to all the counties that were there. Um, I would say, Barry, were there fifty counties represented there, maybe, out of the eighty-seven in Minnesota?
I think there might have been maybe thirty.
Okay. Well, anyway, w- we, we all asked, we said, what is your proposed levy increase? Um, a few threes and fours, uh, I think a lot of five, six, and sevens. There was a fourteen, an eleven percent. Um, uh, but four, five, six, seven were, were about where a lot of the other counties were. Now, we're our county, we do our own thing, but, uh, in comparison, um, we were, we were above, we were in the top percentile for sure.
Yeah, but you, you gotta look at where those counties are and what they are, though, Phil. I mean, because if you just go north of here, there, there's a big difference. So I mean.
Correct.
Uh, I, I'd like to see that, but there's just our wages and our health insurance, our.
Six percent.
Our six percent, and unfortunately, inflation is, is killing everybody, man. And I'd, I'd like to see some cuts. I, I just don't know exactly how to do it, and.
Um, Mister Chair, I mean, one thing, too, that, I mean, there's, there are other things coming next year. Erica, you, you mentioned the African-American, da-da-da-da-da.
Yep.
That's, that's. Twenty-twenty-seven, I'm, unless something happens before that. I mean, I don't wanna put our county behind the eight ball here, but, but by not, by not covering these things and the forthcoming things, but I, I just, I, I just can't.
I think the, the, you have to prepare for, too, is, you know, there's, there's a lot of potential cuts at the federal level with SNAP and Medicaid. That was one thing we talked a lot about, is there's a lot of potential for the counties to have to be, um, paying for part of those benefits.
Twenty-five percent.
Mm-hmm. And that's, you know, of course, we have our partners at AMC that are gonna lobby and advocate for it not to, but we don't know. I mean, I think, I, I, I think it's safe to say nobody here likes a nine percent, but we will do our best to get it lower.
When they asked what Becker County was, I said I, I anticipate about a seven-point-eight, so.
That's our goal?
That's our goal, but, I mean, that's, that's still high.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. All right, so we have motion, a second. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of aye, let's do a roll, or two A, let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner Hanson.
Reluctantly aye.
Mister Nelson.
Aye.
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 I reluctantly two, Phil, but.
Yeah. All right, motion carries. I am reluctant also. All right, Mary.
The second resolution I have is nine twenty-five two B. This is to set the twenty-twenty-six EDA tax levy. The amount is two hundred and forty-five thousand, which is no increase from last year.
I'll make a motion to accept two B.
All right, we have a motion by Erica. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Richard. Do we have any discussion on two B or not two B?
Well, Mister Chair, I mean, it's, I think the discussion is, is this, is this come out of EDA or is it come out of other funding? I mean, I, I don't, it's, the, the, the position is all, you know, it was split fifty-fifty before. I mean, it would be in our general or, or EDA. I think that's appropriateness, and, and we still consider, um, grant writing and, and his job description is still a hundred percent EDA, or are we, or is it some Parks and Rec, or, that'd be my only discussion. But we went back and forth over the years, we went back and forth on this two different times, but I know it was said that the full-time EDA director would bring in twenty times their salary into the county from a former administrator.
I didn't say that.
A former administrator. Twenty times the salaries when we went to full-time this way was what we were promised this job would produce.
And I think, I think part of the problem right now is our housing. Like, I, I think Cody spends a lot of time on our housing. Um, and our, our housing is most of this budget, our housing contract, so.
It's unfortunate that with the state surplus a few years ago, that they put so much money into low-income housing and added so many state employees that we should be doing anything in housing. It should be all state-funded, because they, they increased their staffing by what, I can't remember the number. The number of new employees that the state employed was astronomical, and you're just going, you're gonna, you're gonna, that pot of money is gonna dwindle. Now, you're gonna still have these state employees, and that's a good example of why you, why you review these. I mean, I think the state should be reviewing their, their employee pool and saying, you know, can this, can this, can we cut employees here? Because we don't have the funds to do this. So, anyway, it's, I, I certainly, I think Cody does many things with many hats, and if it's an EDA fully budget, that's fine, but I think he does a lot of stuff for other departments that, I mean, you could argue that all day long, so.
No, he is a very good employee. He does a lot of things, and, but our problem is housing, and what do you do about it? We have people with no housing still. We have people waiting for housing, and so what, what do you do about it? I, do we not house people? Do, you know, I mean, yeah.
And, and housing, whether it's low income or work, workforce housing, whatever it is, you need the housing. If we, if we want the county to continue to grow and bring in more revenue, right? I mean, you, you need to have housing and, and childcare, and those, those are two of the things that, you know, we've worked on most, because you can't work on business development if you don't have housing and, and childcare to bring.
Unfortunately, it's so expensive to build anything now, no, even, even people who are building spec houses don't wanna do it anymore. They're not doing it anymore, because it's, it's just too much money, so. I, I don't know what the answer is there. It's, there isn't any, yeah.
All right, so do we have any more discussion on two B?
Or not to be.
Or not to be.
Well, I, I, again, I, I think it's crucial that we continue the employment, Cody. I mean, I'm not questioning that.
Oh, yeah, 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 I, yeah.
But, and I think we wanna look, if we. But, and I think we want to look if we can save, how, how are ways we can save money with, with the housing program in the future also? It might be, you know, if we look at changing or partnering with other agents, you know, another agency, so. That's where, that's where I was.
Yep.
Kind of going, but.
All right, so.
Is this budget then a deficit spending budget?
No.
For EDA?
No. The levy, you mean?
Yeah, with, with this levy, there is a deficit, I mean, I, we don't have the.
No.
I think we stopped that last year.
Well, we raised it to offset the deficit. This will make a zero budget.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought we did last year. So we have a motion and a second on 2B. Any more discussion? All right, Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes. Todd, finally got to you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Todd.
I have, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have one item. I am asking for three squad cars. They are, this is for 2026, they are Tahos. We just found out that the, the ordering time period just came, just came up, and it is a short, short window. And they are, again, Tahos, the price per vehicle is $53,641.76, which is about a $1,400 increase per vehicle for a total of 169,025.28. Now, each year, we, we budget for five squad cars. And again, that's proposed for 2026. Looking at the cost of these three, plus potentially the cost of the other two that we are hoping to get, we would be within the 2025 budget amount. Probably $5,000 less than what the, the budget for this year is.
But this will come out of the 2026.
It'll come out of the 2026 budget, correct?
And Mr. Chair, we've done this in the past with highway department trucks and stuff, ordering them in 25, 26 delivery. This has not went through committee. We said, I mean, the time for, is short, so both Dave and I said we would, we'd like it to go to full board right away, and then the full board give us a little bit latitude to ask some questions for final approval at committee level, if that would be acceptable. I think, I think in today's budget world, you want to look at, should we extend that mileage on, on vehicles? Should we run that, look at running an extra year? Should we, should we go look at Tahos compared to the other option, other vehicles that are less expensive? Those are the things. I mean, we need, we need to keep our staff, I mean, our vehicles cur, you know, somewhat current, but can we get, I mean, these vehicles now with the Tahos, they're the most expensive vehicle for a sheriff's car we've, that there is. I mean, you can't, I mean, the rest of them are smaller cars or SUVs, so these are the top of the line. Can these go longer? Are they better built and more durable? Can they go longer? Those are the questions that I want to ask and say, you know, if we're going to go these routes, I think we have to extend that life a little bit, because it's not only the cost of the vehicle, it's the cost of the equipment to put in the vehicle, and that, when you re, when you redo that again, it, it's expensive. So those are the questions that I think we would like to get a little bit more in depth at committee for you to justify, and I, I don't know, want to ask those questions to full board, but can you justify those at, so.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
So just some notes here. The price for these vehicles, obviously, it's state contract pricing for this particular vehicle. They are intended for the investigators, so therefore there will not be as much equipment added compared to a regular patrol vehicle. The three that we are replacing, one is a 2020 model, and one is a 2020, or, excuse me, two are 2021 models. Obviously, they're going to, we used to change every three years. We have extended that, Commissioner Nelson, to where it's not three years, we go more so by mileage. These are going to be repurposed for jail transport, so we are going to be, we're going to continue to use these longer. And the ones that our jail is currently using, they are very high miles and are giving us some problems.
Well, again, I have, I have lots of questions, and I have more questions now that you stay that. But, I mean, I think we need to stay moving forward. I, I would ask that we, I would ask that the board make a motion to approve up to the dollar amount, and then have a committee decide specific which ones we move forward with. If it's that, or, an example of my question is, if it's investigators, do we need Tahos for an investigator if they're not? I mean, that, those are my, if you can justify those, then we move forward, but, I mean, I don't know if this is the time to have those little bit discussions, but it's up to the board what your decision is.
So the committee meeting is the 24th of September, is that correct?
Correct, I believe that.
So, and they used to have to be ordered before the end of September?
I don't know what the.
What's the, what's the actual date?
We didn't get an actual date, you just said end of September.
Okay.
We can, you could call a meeting, anything.
You can call a meeting anytime, yeah.
Our monthly meeting was canceled because there was nothing on it this month.
And then this came out after.
And this came out afterwards. You know, one thing I noticed in the dialogue from North Country GMC, it's like, it's got the 26 Tahoe, but then on the next page, on page 54, it says, new to the 2021 Tahoe police vehicles is standard keyless entry. Well, it's not 2021 anymore, so I don't know, know what document this is coming from. So it states some things that are, that it has over other, other vehicles, but that wasn't 21, it's 2025 now, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of three squads for 169,025.28, with the condition that it goes back to committee to discuss possible other options for purchase.
I'll second, but up, do you use that up to?
Up to, yep, up to one, oh, yeah, I'll use the word up to, yeah, up to 169,0528.
With, and then you're, I second it, so your question was, and then to consider lesser costly vehicles?
Yes, at, at committee.
And so you have a motion and a second?
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so this hasn't went through committee yet. We're not sure our prices, oh, Barry, you put on there up to a certain amount.
That was the price for three Tahos?
Yes.
That's, that is the price?
Yep.
Okay, I mean, we just had a discussion about, you know, our levy increase. I mean, are, are, shouldn't this be vetted out a little bit more? No one said what the timeline was when this had, had to be done. Was it the end of September, or was just that what we thought? I mean, I just, I think there should be vetted out a little bit more. Committee hasn't vetted it out, we're bringing it to the board, and we're going to go ahead with it. I mean, maybe these are some, some things we should consider before we start adding on these dollars.
I, I, I think that's the agreement, but with, with the short turnaround it had, these prices are good till the end of September, we don't have another board meeting to, to then, so that was Dave and I's compromise. We can, we'd bring it to board, but we want to review if it's a need for Tahos or a lesser expensive vehicle, or cost savings anywhere.
Yes.
So that's why we said, we don't have a problem coming to board to approval, but we, we would like to vet some of the things more. So we'd have a committee meeting afterwards to try to see if, if these are, if it's needed, if we feel that the Tahoe is the needed vehicle and the mileage is the appropriate time, so, or mileage is appropriate.
And that's what I'd like to know, too. I'd like to know, are we going to get more miles out of, out of a Tahoe than, than the little Ford, you know? I mean, that, that you guys been using, you know? If they're, if you're, if you can get more miles out of them, maybe there's a better value there. I don't know how you find that out, Barry, but I'd like to know that.
Well, I mean, the, the questions that we, we would ask are, are these questions. And the other questions is retail value versus retail, you know, at the end of, at the end of our life, the, the value of it. And then the cost to change these vehicles over, you know, is, is expensive. So those are the things that we would ask at committee and would normally be, you know, we'd, we would already have that vetted. This came up unexpectedly, I don't know that, how, how or why that, that is, but.
We should be able to almost compare some of those. We have both vehicles.
How much, I think we talked yesterday at Finance, that the Fords are like 47?
They're 46,972.
Yeah, so what?
So 47, yeah.
So it's like $6,000 difference?
6,600.
That's 2025.
Yeah, prices, yeah.
And we have not, Commissioner Barber, we have not had Tahos long enough to compare as far as miles, you know, how they go.
You know, I, I think they're a better vehicle, and I think you'd get more miles. I don't know this, but I've had, I've actually had better luck.
Well, a Tahoe with, with 130,000 miles still has a lot of value.
It does have a lot of value.
If you try to buy one in the market, so.
Yes, and, and I've had better luck with my Vega Silverados than I have had with my Ford Ranger, which is kind of in, I just haven't, I haven't, the Ranger is not, I've not gotten my money out of it. And, and I've had very good luck with those Silverados, so.
I've got a Toyota Prius that's got over 250,000 that I haven't done anything, though, and I don't know, maybe.
Those might not be good enough for us.
We did try that.
I'd like to see that. I'd like to see you in one of those Prius.
Well, I probably wouldn't fit, but we, we did try the hybrid, and maybe it was just a bad vehicle, but that one, we did have a lot of issues with it.
What, was that a Ford, was it?
It was a Ford.
Well, that's probably.
The problem was Ford's was not, it was not their premier market. I mean, they weren't the premier in that market class, unfortunately. They still had a lot to learn, I think, of hybrids, but that was 10 years ago now.
Pretty close, yeah, I think it was, yeah.
So do we have any more discussion on the motion?
I guess we are, Dave and I are sharing the board's thoughts. And we're, we're not saying, no, we're not going to do this, but we want to, we want to make sure it's justified that we.
And I want to make sure it's right, too, but it, like I said, I've, I've gotten a lot, and I watch people get a lot more miles out of these. Not just me, but people are getting a lot more miles out of those.
If, if we wouldn't do it now by the end of September, when would, are we looking at next September? Before the, the contract opens again? So that, that's kind of the urgency is, if not now, we might as well wait until next year. So I think, I think it makes sense for us to do the motion and, and trust that Dave and Barry will vet it out.
I mean, the, the leg that we've had in the past few years for vehicles is, I think, I think that engine's catching up now, but it's been horrible for.
Yeah, the leg has been, yeah, and then, and then we have the new company equipping them now, too, so that's better, too. Getting them equipped sooner.
Quicker turnaround.
Quicker turnaround, yeah.
Mr. Chair, just, this is a bigger issue, which I think we need to start resolving in our October, our, our work sessions. But this is really hard. I mean, I know this happened at the last minute, but you, you got to draw the line, line in the sand somewhere and start doing something at some time. We just can't keep doing things the way we've been doing them, in my opinion. For this not to be vetted out better, I'm not blaming anyone for that, but even if we have to call a special meeting or something, we got to start somewhere if we're serious about bringing our levy down. And would you please repeat the motion before we go to vote on it?
Okay, so the motion was to approve the up to the one.
Purchase of three vehicles up to 150, 60, 129.
Yep.
925.
Nine, yep.
With, with the consensus of the Highway Committee or the.
Or the Sheriff's Committee to have.
Was it final?
Final approval on how, if we, on how to, on a different options to save money, save cost. That, pretty close.
Peggy's got it.
Yeah.
She's got it close. Maybe Peggy want to read what you have to fill, how.
I have three vehicles up to $160,925.28, and it will be brought back to the committee to discuss, to consider decreasing the prices of vehicles.
The.
To change of vehicles, or.
Yeah.
The amount is 169,025.
What is it, 160?
160, 925.
Oh, okay, you're right, okay, I was wrong.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Just, again, I just want to reiterate that with this price, and we don't know the price of the Fords yet, but if the prices with the Fords stay roughly the same, or even a little higher, we would still be, we would not increase the budget for 2026. That would, that budget would be roughly the same as what we are for 2025.
I think part of what Phil is, is getting at is, we're looking to cut our budget for 2026, not keep it the same. So that might be one, one consideration for Dave and Barry.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion?
Just, just a point, when we have, when we go to committee for this, I want to look at all the sheriff's cars, all the, I mean, all the years, every vehicle we have in inventory, how many we're waiting for, how long, I mean, we want, want the mileage, and, you know, sometimes you get one that's a lemon. I mean, there are, that's the case, so, so, but with that, with that information, I think that's where we're going to make a decision on if we buy, maybe we buy two this year and, and hold off on the third. I don't know, but those are the discussions now. Now, Phil, you're going to, you're going to put your faith in Dave and I that we'll make a somewhat conservative decision on that if you support this, so.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, you know, I, I don't want to get into the minutia. I don't want to have to get into the minutia of going down and seeing what, I trust Sheriff Glander that he's going to put the right equipment on the car. That's not the issue for me. It's the big, bigger issue of the nine percent levy increase with these. That is the bigger issue for me on this. I'm not saying we don't need them, but we haven't even vetted out whether we can get more miles out of these better vehicles that are better equipped, so.
Call the vote.
Yep, I, so a motion and a second, so we'll go roll call. So Commissioner Hanson, go first, please.
No.
Commissioner, no?
Crime.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Todd. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned.
Try the rest of your trip, Phil.
Yep. Thank you. Hey, by the way, Judy Dodd, shout out to Judy Dodd, she did a great job, and this worked really well.